Okay, thank you. Okay, to the disappointment of many of you out here, we're back after our summer break, and it's Wednesday, September 5, and we'll move directly into our items here. The first couple of things are a couple of requests for extensions. The first is the Goran John Nickic LLC Brandywine Subdivision Lots 5, 6, 7, and 8. This was an application for a subdivision amendment, clearing and grading limit line amendment, site development plan, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, and SWIP approval. It's on Cynthia Court, and my understanding is that there are no real issues with regard to the extension, that they're pretty close to getting to where they need to be, and I believe this first one, Janice, is a retroactive one.
Yes.
They just missed it back in August 12, I believe.
I need to ask Bob, did they submit an amended clearing and grading limit line of site plan yet to you?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so it's just for the obtaining the building permit?
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the extension that's requested?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And our second item is for Citron. This is formerly the Manix subdivision lot number one. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat and final subdivision plat approval. It's a lot merger, IPP, steep slopes permit, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, and SWIP approval, 123 and 127 Westwood Drive. Again, Bob, my understanding is that we're pretty close, and I think this was just precautionary because I thought they might be starting.
They submitted some legal items which are under review right now, but there's still some items they have to do with. They're fairly close.
Okay. No issues, problems with the extension?
No.
Okay. Is there therefore a motion to grant the extension that's been requested?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We move now to our next featured item, and that's a public hearing on Chapua Crossing, SG Chapua A and B LLC. This is an application for a site development plan for the East Village approval, 480 Bedford Road, New York Route 117.
Before I end these starts, do you want to take a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes. I was practicing on my break, but apparently it didn't work out well. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Tong from Divinity Tong Schwabey on behalf of SG Chapua B and its contract vendee for the East Village Toll Brothers, Inc. With me this evening Felix Charney from Summit Development, Casey Devlin, James Fitzpatrick from Toll Brothers, our project counsel, Mark Weingarten, and my colleague Matt Steinberg. We're pleased to be here this evening for the first public hearing for the East Village. We want to thank the board and its consultants and staff for the past months of review, discussion, workshops, interchange, by which we believe we've provided information that was requested to fully describe the site development plan for the East Village and its conformance both with the PDCP, that's the Plan Development Concept Plan, as well as the additional detail required of a site plan. We're also pleased, and you may have been by the site recently, with the activity, the progress on the retail project, which begins to show some of the architecture and the streetscape that we've all worked together to coordinate with the existing buildings on the site and to set the tone for the traditional neighborhood development concepts that are also reflected in the East Village. Thirdly, we'd like to, on behalf of people who have not been here recently at our work sessions, introduce Toll Brothers, Inc. as the contract vendee for the East Village. Toll Brothers, as you know, is a nationwide builders, built similar projects in 22 different states. Last year, 2017, they celebrated their 50th anniversary of founding, since their founding in Pennsylvania, and this year, 2018, they were named for the fourth consecutive year the number one house builder on Fortune magazine's world most, world's most admired companies list. So we appreciate their experience and their expertise in developing, planning, and building townhomes, and we've taken advantage of that, or that's reflected in the plans and documents that are before your board. So what I'd like to do tonight to begin the public hearing is just to give an overview of the site plan as it sits in the context of the master, the MFPD, PDCP, that is the Plan Development Concept Plan, or master plan for the site. So Matt, if you'd start with the first slide, please. So this, for the MFPD, the multi-family plan development district, the code, Newcastle Code requires a two-step process involving the town board first approving what I'll call a master plan, or a plan development concept plan, for any project within the MFPD zone. It sets the overall framework, and then the planning board reviewing a site plan, a more detailed site plan for that same site. This is the 2015 PDCP as approved by the town board, but also as heavily influenced through workshops at that time by the planning board in coordination with the work that was going on in the retail project to the top left of this page. And the effort was made to coordinate the new development on the site with the existing development, so that at the end of the day, there would be an integrated campus, walkable, that had a, an identity, that didn't have a line that you could pass from one area to the next and made that connection to the best extent possible. The plan calls for 91 townhomes in clusters of two, three, and four units oriented to, with their front doors to the streets or to open space areas. And this was a significant change from the earlier plan, which was a more traditional vehicular cluster, if you will, and the thought here, under the traditional neighborhood development concepts, was to make this a walkable neighborhood, people walking up and down the streets and seeing front doors as they walked. So the, so the East Village, the PDCP, is 31.2 acres in the eastern portion of the Chapua Crossing site. All access is from interior drives. This is the east entry drive, which just off the page connects to Bedford Road, and this we call the loop road, which continues from the south entry drive all the way down to the Lower Roaring Brook Road entry. So the access to these units are from the internal drives. The main East Village drive is then fed off of, by alleyways, which lead to the rear garages for each of the units. So unlike some townhome developments where you drive into a courtyard and you see garages, here, walking or driving along the street, you see front doors, you see front doors along the main entry drive, and that was a key component of the plan. Along with the drives, I'll leave that for a moment. The idea was to connect those, the East Village with the retail development and also the office development in the western portion of the site through a series of sidewalks, sidewalks on both sides of the street, connecting the sidewalks on both sides of the main entry drive that lead to the retail shops and to the 200 building and the office building to the west. The other component of this plan is the removal, just off the page, up here of the 700 building, which is the northernmost building built by Reader's Digest, to be replaced by a stormwater management system that would take water from the western portion of the East Village through pipes underneath the parking lot. The other component of this plan, which was not in the original plan, but as this plan developed, it became possible and important to preserve the existing auditorium that was to be provided to the town, along with a piece of land on which it would sit for its use, and has been provided already on a nominal lease basis for the Performing Arts Center. That has been a very successful reuse of that facility. So this was the 2015 MFPD. The plan today, Matt, is very similar in form and nature, and we believe through the work that we've been doing with the board over the past months, in the applicant's view, is consistent with the, both the plan and the intent of the MFPD, PDCP. Again, still 91 townhomes within the East Village, accessed internally through this spine road within the East Village, auditorium on its own separate parcel, which is now drawn out there, townhomes again in clusters of two, three, and four. This also, this plan also had the benefit of Toll's experience in townhome development recently through the 22 states that it works, as well as locally, and that's been very important in terms of being able to tailor the units, both on the outside and the inside, towards the target market, primarily empty nesters who would come to live here, to purchase the, to purchase the townhomes. In terms of the site plan and engineering, we've been able to further develop both architecture, site plan, and landscape, site engineering and landscape, both in the context of the infrastructure that was, has been put in place over the past nine months on the retail project. We're now able to connect directly into that. The retail project included stubouts at the perimeter of the East Village for future water, sewer, gas, electric connections, so those can be done without any further disturbance within the retail and the office complex. The stormwater management, which is an important component, important feature of this site, as it is not only reviewed by the town, but is also reviewed by the New York City DEP, has been able to be coordinated with the stormwater management on the retail project. We have been through the parallel process for DEP and town review for the retail project. Having learned from that, we're able, we're smarter the second time around and have done the required testing of the various infiltration areas and other stormwater management areas, so that our submissions to both the town and DEP, which are done in parallel, hopefully will have, be more on target the first time and/or the second time that they are being If we then overlay the two plans, the current plan and the 2015 MFPD PDCP, here in blue is the current plan, the blue line, the red lines are the 2015 plan. They are basically, we believe, the same plan. The road has not changed, road has not shifted. What has changed is that the building footprints have shifted slightly with the change in the units. Some of the units have been turned 90 degrees, some twos are now threes, threes are now fours, but there's still 91 townhomes in groups of two, three, and four. So that in plan, we believe that our plan, current site plan, is consistent with the PDCP for the MFPD. If you go to the next slide, Matt. So architecture is an important component of the site plan, and here it's no different. We're charged on this site to reflect the Georgian nature of the 200 of the Kupola Building, and it's not until we got into the detail with Toll's architecture, or Toll's architects, that we could fully show how that would work at a townhome level, so that some of the Georgian elements which are shown, which appear in the four-story Kupola building, need to be translated or recombined in a two- or three-story townhome. Part of that, that designing and detailing involve fitting the buildings more closely to the site. And in several cases, including what's illustrated here, I think we were able to improve, with the planning's board's encouragement, some of the conditions along the main entry drive, where part of the challenge, if you go back a slide, Matt, or go back to two slides, yeah. Part of the challenge along the entry drive was to reflect the fact that this is the main entrance from the east. On the right side, there would be townhomes for residential uses. On the left side, there would be the Lifetime Fitness Building, and further on, retail buildings on the right side of the street. So this is a main street with different uses on both sides, not unlike other main streets and villages, but it required trying to make that connection across the street in the best way possible. So if you jump two slides forward. At the time of the MFPD, here was the cross-section across that main entry drive shown by these two cars here, with the two-story Lifetime Fitness on the left and the townhomes on the right. Street trees on both sides, street lights on both sides, sidewalk on this side, the sidewalk on this side, on the residential side, at the time of the PDCP, was raised up four feet. And so the pedestrian on this side is a little bit separated from what's going on at street level. With the new information or the further designed architecture, we were able to make, make up that grade instead of on the, on the street, or adjoining the street in the units that are joined there, so that at street level, the condition on both sides is very similar, the relationship to the pedestrians, to the street trees, to the traffic flow is more of a main street feel, if you will. But that was really a result of Toll Architecture being modified, actually, and I'll go through in just a moment, to reflect the site condition and to create what we believe to be an approved condition in the more public domain of the site. The materials and style of the townhomes has also been further developed with the assistance of, with Toll's input and Toll's architects' input. The Georgian elements have been brought down to a residential scale. The townhomes, these are groups of three attached townhomes, and this slide just illustrates the different combinations of the three basic materials, clambered, brick and stone facing with six over six double hung windows, some with shutters, some without, other elements, other architectural elements that will give these units their own character, and the combination, different combinations of facade treatments for a particular unit can be chosen by the prospective buyer in such a way so that there's a, there's a both a complementariness, I made up a new word, through the, through the consistent use of materials and styles, but also a randomness, as you hear down the street, that we think will add some character and a little differentiation from other projects where every block is the same. And we think that's a, that's a positive element to the, to the streetscape and to the character of the, of the East Village. Next we'll show, uh-oh. Next we'll show a series of floor plans. These are ground floor plans. These are two-story units, ground floor plans. There are a variety of layouts, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, some with masters on the first floor for people who don't want to walk up and downstairs, some with masters up. The idea is to appeal to different, again, primarily empty nesters, but people of different, who might want to choose from different floor plans and different configurations of where the living space is as opposed to the sleeping space. The next slide shows the change that occurred in those units primarily between the entry drive and the auditorium, kind of halfway into the site, in order to ease the grading along the main entry drive. And what you see here is that, here's the backside of the unit where the, where the cars come into the garage. There's actually a split between the garage level and the main living level of one to three feet, and that's accommodated through a stair that's added at the backside of the, or the front side of the garage, so that you can get up that, you can make that change of grade inside the building as opposed to outside. So there were site accommodations made in order to, or building accommodations made in order to create the site, site leveling in some cases. What that does is it pushes out, the overall dimensions of the units are no different because of our configuration. Basically, all the units are the same depth, but what that does is it reduces the size of the living space in these particular units and makes it really not possible to have masters on the ground floor in those units with the interior grade change. Oh, before you go there, yeah, yeah. So as a result of this grade change, or as a result of trying to take up some of the grade internal to the units, the floor plans for some of the units are, we believe, or Toll believes, to be somewhat not as desirable as some of the other units because of the reduced depth of the buildings. And so what they are requesting, one change from the PDCP, and this change would require a change by the town board of the master plan, as well as the planning board's change during the, or approval of the change during the site plan review, and we have discussed that with the planning board during some of the work sessions, and presented here as the addition of nine, the change for nine two-bedroom units to become three-bedroom units. That is the addition of nine total bedrooms within the 81 townhomes. Currently, the mix are 23 bedrooms and 61 two-bedrooms, as set in the PDCP, so that's 20 and 61. What we would propose to change that to would be 29 then and 52. Still totaling 81 units, 81 townhomes, nine would have one more bedroom. We provided an assessment of how that would change, the environmental analyses that were prepared during the DEIS and the SEIS for the project, and we believe that the primary change would be the potential addition of three more schoolchildren. That is from estimated 46 to 49 would be addition of the, those nine bedrooms. And it's interesting, just as a, in order to do that, we had to check some ratios with the Chapua School District, and in the time that this project was first submitted back in 2007 to 2017, over that 10-year period, the total enrollment within the district has decreased by about 430 students, so that that's, that's the context in which these additional students would be proposed. Landscaping was also an important component of this site plan stage. We have now provided detailed plans with the, and configurations with the assistance of the town's environmental coordinator to show plantings of over 580 trees and 470 shrubs, both within the complex adjacent to the units, along the perimeter, along the streets, and along the berm and meadow area to the east of the East Village on this side. We've also been able to reduce the number of proposed trees to be removed from 293 at the PDCP in 2015 to now to 237. So that's a combination of adjusting the grading, adjusting the units in some cases, and being able to preserve some of the existing trees which provide the character, primarily in the meadow, in the meadow to the east. This also shows, as I've described previously, both the pedestrian connections, the extension of the same streetscape elements that are used in the retail project. For instance, light poles, the pedestrian light poles along the sidewalks are 12-foot-high poles with two-foot fixtures on top. Same fixture is used throughout the project at a lower, or rather a less frequent, or spaced further apart in the resident, along the residential drive as opposed to the, to the retail drive, to reflect that not as much light is needed in the residential area. And the sidewalks though connect both to the main sidewalks in the retail area. The trails in the meadow to the east connect up to the trails in the meadow to the north. In terms of zoning compliance, the, we are applying to the town board for an adjustment to the boundary line of the East Village and the MFPD. This plan shows the existing boundary in red and the proposed boundary in blue. The change results from the, when the red line was established, it was put in the middle of the street as a, because these are private streets, this is Bedford Road out here, there's private streets, and an inadvertent result of that placement was that the, the half of the street here and here is counted in the impervious coverage for the development. That was not an intended condition, and results in the coverage being exceeded, so we're proposing to move that to the edge of the roadway so that the street that is shared, private, but shared street is part of the, the overall development rather than the, the East Village. There's also been 1.1 acres removed from the East Village with the auditorium parcel that would be transferred to the town after subdivision, and in order to keep the buildings which remain in the same location, they do not change as a result of the boundary line proposed change, we're moving the boundary line out here, and the MFPD would now go from 32 acres to 31 point, from 31.2 to 32.0 acres. In addition to the site development plan application that's been made, several other town applications to be reviewed in parallel have been submitted. They include a steep slope disturbance permit, a tree removal permit, review of the stormwater plan, which is being done concurrently with DEP's review of the plan, that's called the SWIP, or the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. There is no activity related to the East Village, proposed in the wetlands to the east, no activity within the buffer or the wetland itself. There is remediation activity related to the retail project that will take place at the same time within that buffer area. That's primarily a removal of invasive plants and planting of additional plants. The subdivision plants have been, are being finalized by the surveyor. We have submitted application forms for two subdivisions. One is a master subdivision of this entire site, the Chapua Crossing site, which would subdivide the parcel into six, six parcels, retail, commercial, residential parcels, an auditorium parcel, a 200-building parcel where the, where the affordable units are, and an open space parcel that would encompass the four lots along Roaring Brook Road, which, from which three houses were demolished, and is being replanted as permanent open space. So that's an overall master So that's an overall master subdivision. The second subdivision, which is more directly related to the East Village, is just of that East Village, now 32-acre parcel, and that would involve 92 lots. A provision of the PDCP approval was that each of the townhomes would be on a fee simple lot, primarily for tax purposes. So we have 91 townhomes and then one common area lot. That would include the open space and the roads and the stormwater management facilities. So that plan, those plots rather, would be submitted to the planning board during September for its review in conjunction with the site plan. That's kind of the overview. Be happy to go back and talk about anything else at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your good work. Okay. Why don't we turn to staff and perhaps get comments from staff, to the extent that we have those at this point, and run through some of the important comments and questions and issues that are still out there. So Bob, I guess you're first?
Okay. I have prepared it with general comments, just so everyone knows. I broke it up into GC comments, just for the site layout and any other engineering issues, and I broke the stormwater comments into a separate entity. The stormwater comments are still under review. I haven't finished them. I put that in the memo. Once I get them done, I will send them to the applicant under separate letter and I'll give the planning board on that. So I'll start on the GC comments. GC1, GC2, GC3, GC4, GC5 really have to do with technical items with the sightlines that the applicant has shown along the main access road and a few of the interior roadways. There are some comments I have just in general in all those five that they should reference a little bit more detail on how they came about the referencing of the distances and what publications they base it on. Of course, they didn't state, for instance, they should indicate the height of the objects in all the instances. For the high object in the car, indicate the proposed posted speed limit, indicate the existing ground elevation and elevations of the line of sight at 50-foot intervals, and indicate the minimum height from the existing grade line to the site. And that pretty much encompasses those. Those comments leading up to GC6. Evidently, they reached out to local Westchester County moving companies, and I guess they wrote back to them, which they incorporated into their report, that they stated that they would be using non-articulating single-unit trucks about 35 to 40 feet in length. And I just wanted to point out to the board's attention that based on ASHTO configurations on these typical types of units that are used and classified, and I broke it down into a table which shows the minimum design turning radius, the center turning radius, and the minimum inside radius. Because the single-unit trucks are non-articulating, such as an interstate truck, they all have a larger radius. So I would recommend highly that they show the SU40 on all the internal movements in the roadway system, and you might find out it needs more space than the WB40s because they don't articulate.
Now, Bob, would that apply to these internal alleyway and private loops, or is it also on the loop road as well?
It would have to be shown on all the roadways.
Okay.
Wherever the tractor trailer or SU40 may go.
Okay.
So that would have to be demonstrated on all of them. They did it for the WB40s, but again, you have to superimpose the larger radiuses and they might find out it might not be enough. So I would recommend they do that.
And again, due to, I'm sorry. The other issue is, of course, these standards are all based on clear roads. And again, when we have snow and plowing, the constraints get a little bit tighter.
That is correct.
Okay.
So they have to keep that in consideration when you're reviewing the turning movements.
And where does the school bus fall in the chariot?
The school bus is SU40. So if they do an SU40 and the SU40 works in this condition, the school bus would be able to make the same route. Evidently, there's a, let me use the pointer here on this. I'm going to find out where it is. Oh, is it out there? Is this the old one?
No.
Oh, right here. This road, I don't know the name of the road, but there's one, two, three, four units right there. I'd recommend that they put a turnaround here. They're claiming that if they do, it's going to be an impact to trees, steep slopes, and a retaining wall. But I would recommend that at least they submit a conceptual plan to the planning board to see what the impacts are, and we can make a better determination on what they do.
What's proposed now, just a hammerhead?
Nothing. Just a...
It looks like a two or three-foot hammerhead.
You know, there's no hammer the head at all. It just ends. So I would recommend that they put something there that's acceptable and reasonable, at least when a vehicle comes down here, especially for snow plowing. You could turn around and come out forward as opposed to backing up that 160 feet. So that's GC7. I noticed on the original MFPD that the town board approved the driveway length from the garage door to the pavement is approximately 15 to 20 feet in length. All the new dimension they show now based on the layout has been dropped down and reduced to eight to 12 feet. I have concerns with that because I don't believe that it's going to allow enough distance or light, enough vision from the car that's backing out of the driveway to look left or right to see an oncoming car coming down to it. Now, they presented some sort of study and they came up with a distance of 47 feet. I would perceive that as a stopping site distance from a car that's coming down the roadway and seeing a car backing out of the driveway. But I did a quick analysis based on the design speeds, which I don't know what they're going to base the design speeds on, and this is all based on ASHTO, which is on still GC8. It shows the design speeds of 15, and you need a stopping distance of 80 feet. First 20, you need 115. Every 25, it goes up to 155. Obviously, the 47 feet is way less than any of these numbers, which could be an issue.
Did we have this issue before when the driveways were longer with the prior application? As we, prior version?
I didn't review those when they were 20 feet, but I went online and there's some standards that some towns use. We don't have any standards on this, but a lot of it is common sense and practicality. A lot of them I see is between the 15 and 20 feet, and there's reasons for it. Not only that, going to jump into GC9, if you're driving along a roadway and you have an eight-foot apron, you need a minimum amount of turning radius to get into that driveway. So I would almost think when you're turning and coming down these roadways in the back that you're getting into the driveway, you might have to do a 2.3-point turn just to get into the driveway, because you won't have enough radius. So that's critical. That's GC9. And then GC10, because they have such short aprons now, and they did a nice shop showing all the elevations, but about 13 of the units are in excess of the minimum grades based on the driveway grades in our town code. And five of them exceed 7%, which may, I'm going to defer to Les on this, they may require a variance because they're above 7% on GC10. I don't know what Les' opinion is on that, but I'll defer to him on that. GC11 is really with the retaining walls, which I'm sure they'll submit the plans, proper plans prior to VP, and those are notes. GC12 is basically, I would still recommend that they put profiles down in light of the fact that they have to get approved by the county as well. GC13 is an engineer's report to come up with bonding amounts for the stormwater and plantings. And GC14 is a, obviously they have to get approval from the county regarding the water maintenance and sanitary sewer improvements. I have MS1, 2, 3, 4, 5, they haven't been addressed yet. PS1 through PS4 have not been addressed. I guess when they submit the plans, I'll take a look at that point in time. And as again, as I stated at the beginning of my presentation, the stormwater comments have not been prepared yet, but they're under review. And that's it.
Okay. I have a stormwater question. This percolation area here is up against a wall, and will this collect water? Will there be drainage out of here so that this water that is caught in here doesn't build up against?
That's a pretty good distance away.
Is it?
Yes.
Far enough away?
Yes.
All right. So we don't have to worry about weeping through the wall?
Yeah, I mean, they have the buildings in front of it, then you have the roadway, then you have the wall. If they were right in front of the wall, I'd be a little bit concerned about understanding pressure.
Okay.
Pretty good distance.
Fair enough. Thank you.
In addition to your comments regarding the roadway, we also, I should have mentioned before, we have comments from New York City, the city DEP advising that they have received the application, they're working on the stormwater prevention plan in concert with the town. We also have received a letter from the Westchester County Planning Department. And again, they've issued many comments before, they reiterated when they've done so. But again, they're, they're kind of focused on sewage disposal and the volume that the location is going to produce. And again, their concern is working on as much as possible measures that will offset the projected increase in flow. So that was a comment from the county. And then importantly, we received a memo from the Chapakua Fire Department, and it was concerned with regard to the proposed width of the roadways. Again, this is a public safety issue. The chief indicated that the proposal is for 20-foot roadways at this point. They've observed that their fire trucks, mirror to mirror, are basically 10 feet. Their concern was that there would be inadequate, could be inadequate passage for another vehicle coming in another way. And again, once we have the winter season, we start plowing snow along the sides, they felt that there would be even further constraint. So their recommendation was to consider wider roadways, 11-foot and I think 12-foot and alternatives. And that's a big, a big issue because I think combined with your comments with regard to the driveways, which have now been abbreviated, width of the roadways, and in some cases, the expansion of some of the homes themselves from what we saw before on the original approved PDC application, there's some issues I think that we need to tackle with regard to layout. And I think, you know, this is important. I don't think we can hash it out here, but I think this is going to be a very important threshold issue that the applicant needs to spend some time with staff to reconcile. I don't think the board, I don't think staff really wants to sit here and redraw this and redesign it for you. But these are serious issues, and I think they have, if not tackled correctly, we have some issues. And there's just no way, I think, just speaking for myself, I think board members will join me on this, there's no way we can leave a comment like we have from the fire department unresolved. It's just a public safety issue and it's one, at least in my book, we can't just gloss over.
I would agree totally.
I actually would have to disagree with you guys on that one, but I hear where the fire department's coming from, and I agree with Bob and all the turning radiuses and with the, with the moving trucks. I would just like to say, let's, let's not the exception be the driving design that becomes the norm. I would hate to all of a sudden widen up all these streets and lose the neighborhood character that everybody's tried so hard to get. I mean, yes, I hear fire trucks go down the street, usually cars pull over, fire trucks barrel through, and I'd hate to add four more feet of road, to every road to accommodate, God forbid, the fire that happens once every so often. So I hear it, but I would just like to not lose that neighborhood character where we had smaller, intimate streets and stuff like that.
You know, if I can...
Can you please speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry. If I can echo, is that on? Yeah. If I can echo and support your comments, there, obviously, our traffic standards, engineering standards are critically important to life safety and the proper function of the roadways. But it's, it's also true that sometimes when taken to a certain level beyond of what is actually absolutely necessary, these things tend to sort of change the scale of our environments in ways that are really not really critical. I don't know whether that's true in this case or not. I think it bears some discussion. Yeah, I agree, you don't want to get in the way of the fire department doing what they need to do. But for the sake of some mirrors on a fire truck or having an extra couple feet on the roadway, when we have roadways around here which don't meet that standard and they get to the fires and there's not a problem, these are things that I think we really need to sort of look at and have conversations about. With regard to ASHTO standards, I understand their purpose. I also understand that there are so many places in this country, so many places probably in this town, where these, our, our roads don't meet those standards. And trucks do have to make a, you know, a backing movement in order to get around a corner. And that, I think ought to be, rather than to favor the truck making a direct move and making it easy for the truck, if the consequences of that are that they cause a revision to, or an expansion, or a qualitative change to the environment, then I think that that's something that we ought to really have some conversations about. I, I just have the feeling that there has been some real thought gone into the side, the size of these roadways for the purpose of creating a neighborhood. And I'm in support of that effort, and I don't want to throw that effort away when I think maybe we've come pretty close to something which feels like a nice walking neighborhood. So let's have the conversation and see where it goes. But I'm in support of taking a, taking a close look at that and see whether it's really necessary.
I have some thoughts on that, that, you know, with the unarticulated trucks, then when they make the turns, then they're going to be on the sidewalk, they're going to be all over the place on lawns. That's not exactly what we would have in mind, I would hope. One thought would be that some of these roads could be made, or the alleys could be made one-way. And that would, I think, change some of the thinking about traffic congestion with fire trucks and other things like that. So that might be a consideration. I can see several places where one-way roads would help. I certainly, you know, appreciate the thought of making this a good project and keeping it a good project. But on the other hand, the, the old roads that you refer to are their grandfather. These aren't. And this sets a precedent of narrow roads and, you know, in future developments that I think we have to, you know, add to the discussion.
I think that's a good point. Some of the older roads where the emergency services are forced to work with less than ideal conditions point out why we might want to have better conditions going forward on, in newer, in newer projects, because it does create, it does create a problem.
So...
And I'm thinking of, I also think of North Greeley Avenue, which is a very difficult street to have two-way traffic going down when there's no snow. And it's almost impossible to have two-way traffic going down when you've got snowbanks and the ambulance is at the end of that street, and I think that creates problems too. We want to avoid problems like that.
No, I agree. And there are, there are critical places where, especially in locations like that, where you got to be sure you get it, you get it right. I'm not saying you should ever get it wrong. But it's also true that actually the, these neighborhoods that have the narrower streets are actually the more charming neighborhoods we have. I mean, these are the, these are, these are the ones that people, you know, that help define the town. It seems to me, in my experience, the subdivisions that are done with 30-foot-wide streets everywhere are just, I hate to get a little out of line here, but they're like spirit killers, just asphalt everywhere, and it's just unnecessary because it is, because it's set to a design standard, which actually doesn't necessarily, isn't really, I don't think, necessary. A fire truck coming down the street, I don't think, if it's a two-way street, I don't think it needs to have 12-foot lanes on each side. They could go down the middle of the street when they go down the street, there's plenty of room. So I guess that's why we need to have the conversation.
We need to open up the doors.
Yeah, we need to have actually one door open.
We have to have the door open.
Thank you for your thought to cut the noise out. We appreciate that.
You can ask the people to be quiet. Ask them to, you can tell them to be quiet.
Yeah, tell them we said so.
Okay. Thank you.
I think these are good comments, but that's why I suggested that it really goes back to staff, because there are more than one kinds of solutions for taking care of this. I would think we would distinguish this project, though, from some of the charming and more open areas, because this is... this is going to be quite dense. It's substantially denser than the backcountry roads where we have sparse, we have virtually no traffic during the day. Here, we have something that's much denser, and I think therefore it's a distinguishing situation. But to the extent that there are other solutions, little areas, pull-offs, maybe one-way, whatever, those are the kinds of things that need to be discussed with staff. And again, I agree that there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. We shouldn't just toss it away. But the same token, I don't think we can ignore the statement, the comment from the Fire Department. Somehow, it's got to be addressed. My suggestion is that we leave that to the applicant and staff to come out and meet on this and work it out, and then come back to us with the solution.
Well, fair enough. I don't disagree with anything you said, but I think that the applicant and staff will have a will have a solution. I presume that there will be a solution, but I'm not ready to say that that is the solution. I think that the planning board has a voice in this as well. So we'd be looking forward to hearing recommendations.
Sabrina, do you want to add anything at this point?
Well, I think it's important to note the importance of this conversation, because if, you know, the road width is going to affect the sidewalks, it's going to affect the lighting plan, it's going to affect ADA drop-offs where there's roadways, it's going to affect landscaping. You know, so this really has a cumulative impact regarding the site layout. You know, I'm in the process of reviewing the environmental analysis that was submitted. This board was an interested agency. If there are changes to that environmental analysis, this board would make recommendation to the town board. And all that has to be taken into consideration holistically. So, you know, I'm not yet completed my review of the environmental impacts, but this issue that Bob has raised, you know, does have impacts to other areas of the project.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. The main East Village Drive is 22 feet wide. The alleys are 20 feet wide. So we did try to balance the level of traffic with the desire to reduce where possibly the amount of mess.
Now, remind us, which of these roads are going to be dedicated, if any?
None. All the interior roads are privately held, privately maintained. No. All the roads interior to Chapua Crossing are privately maintained and held.
Okay, thank you.
The only items that will be dedicated is the, I believe, the sanitary and the water main. All the stormwater is going to be the responsibility of.
That's correct.
Okay, very good, thanks. Steve, did you have questions or comments?
No, I'm still in the process of reviewing, you know, the environmental analysis. I have worked pretty closely with the landscape architects on, you know, the proposed tree replacement and the work on the landscaping berm that's, you know, to the east along Cowden Lane. You know, as Sabrina mentioned, I think one of the biggest challenges is we're really trying to maintain, I think, you know, a unique character to, you know, the whole development and you know, the amount of fill and the balancing of the, you know, the cut and the fills on the site, you know, present, you know, some of the issues that we're dealing with. For example, with the fill, you know, they're estimating about 32,000 yards of fill, you know, for the site. And to use it on-site, they're estimating 20,000 to 25,000 of it will be used for the landscaping berm area. You know, which as a result, and it's, you know, balancing the, you know, keeping the fill on-site versus trucking it off-site, and also balancing it on the site, we're actually creating new steep slopes. You know, where in the existing condition, you know, we're not doing that. And what's interesting is because of the length of time that's transpired, and we've had 10-plus years, you know, and the applicants have, you know, demonstrated, there were some really good photos, you know, from 2008 and, you know, to the present, you know, which shows a lot of the existing trees along Cowden Lane. You know, have grown up to a point where it's really providing an effective screen. So the question that I have in terms of balancing the environmental impact is, are we creating more damage potentially by using all the fill on-site, creating a new slope condition? You know, or would we be better off taking what we currently have, looking at where we can supplement with good plantings, you know, to create the screen that was the intention, you know, back in 2011, you know, with not using all the fill?
Where would you?
Well, and then that becomes the tricky part, is do we truck it off-site, or do we, you know, figure another use? But, you know, it's creating, you know, a more significant environmental issue that maybe we don't have to that degree. You know, so it's just something I've been struggling with. You know, I think the landscaping plan, and we've been working to really, I think, create a nice naturalized, you know, landscape, which will be, you know, beneficial in the future, but maybe it makes sense to avoid that altogether.
So I've always been, we've had conversations about the slope of this berm. And I've always been a little bit concerned that it was too steep for the aesthetics of it. And if there also is a concern about the quantity of steep slopes we're introducing on the site, is there still not a way to regrade, to change the design of that berm in order to soften that, so you don't have as much steep slope?
Well, I think they've done a pretty good job with that.
They can't go any further than that?
Well, I think it's still a work in progress, but they've taken it down to, you know, in some areas, as much as three-on-one slopes. It's anywhere from 10-on-one to three-on-one. So they've done a really good job of, you know, trying to address that issue. It's just still creating a lot of new, you know, disturbance and new planting and, you know, new adjustments to get all the plantings to, you know, take effect, you know, that area.
Okay.
One of the issues that we have that's a change in this application is, as I understand it, when the first application came through, the presumption was that the buildings were going to be built on a slab. Now we have substantially more fill being produced because we're cutting it to the ground to make these basements. And it's probably adding to, you know, this issue, this problem, and of course, disturbance to root systems and everything else. So it may be causing a problem for additional tree loss that I know you've been working on since the beginning of the application. So again, I was going to ask actually specifically on page 14, where you see the difference changes in steep slopes, how much of that really is really the berm, the extreme and the very steep slopes?
I mean, we can maybe have Andy explain more, but I mean, based on how high interpreted, I mean, it looks like 20,000 to 25,000 of the yards of the fill is designated for the landscaping in the berm area, and then the rest will be used for, you know, roads and frontage and, you know, other things, so...
The slope here, let me see if I understand why this is happening. This steep slopes are here?
Yeah.
That is the result of essentially doing their best to grade the site, they're essentially just pushing the dirt this way?
Well, what they're trying to do is create a flatter area closer to the buildings.
Right.
I mean, that was the original intent, it was just to do a berm, you know, in front of the buildings to create some visual screening.
This dirt essentially came from up here, is that right?
Well, it's going to come from the site, I'm not sure exactly, you know, where they're... I mean, they're doing it in phases, you know, and materially stockpiled, so it's coming from the entire development.
Okay. It does come from the grading of the overall site. The, at the inception, the proposal was to supplement the screening of that area by creating a berm. So that was part of the original plan. Now, as Steve mentioned, closer into Cowden Lane, within the wetland and the buffer area, that vegetation had had 10 years to grow, so that the berm perhaps is not as...
Useful, needed?
Useful, as it was at the time, but I think that it still served that purpose. If the berm were not there, the grade of the alley behind the units would still be at the same height, so we actually provided an exhibit in one of the workshops to show a retaining wall. There would be an additional retaining wall along, a further extended retaining wall along the east side of that alley. So the grade still has to be made up. We have tried to shape that in a naturalistic way, reducing its steepness, it's fully vegetated.
Do those units back there have basements?
Yes, all the units have basements.
Could you put the garage at the basement level and then not have to raise that alley road all the way up, and then maybe not have to do such a retaining wall? Swap the garage in the basement, then take the basement...
We can look at all of these things. The grading is complicated on this site because of stormwater and because of other reasons. But, you know, we're happy to look at those.
That's a creative solution potentially. That means that these buildings, as buildings, are another floor higher in the back, right?
Yeah, they would be a little bit higher in the back, yeah.
Be bigger, so that would be one of the trade-offs.
Yeah, there's always a, you push a balloon in one end, it pops out the other, so, okay.
Interesting idea, though.
No, I'll continue the review and working with them, but I just wanted to throw that out there, is you know, we're trying to balance, you know, the, you know, keeping the fill on-site, but it is generating a lot of new potential impacts that we may not...
Trucking the fill off-site is definitely a short-term impact, right?
Correct, correct.
Is there any way we can compare that short-term to the long-term of the berm?
Yeah, I don't know.
Or is it really bananas and pineapples, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's so many factors that we don't have control over when it comes to, you know, vegetation and growth and that kind of thing.
Well, one of the things I guess I would look at, given all the discussion, I hadn't really paid enough attention to this previously, but you know, we have an increase in extremely steep slopes. Which are the ones that are hardest to deal with? So that if there's a way to reduce that, and the impact is a foot or two higher or whatever, or maybe there's less basement space, something like that, then I think that would help us, help me anyway, a great deal, in trying to get a better balance. I still like the idea of having the visuals broken up. And so while even the Cowden Lane people may not see, need to see, because at least seasonally, they don't have the, you know, the view shed impacted with all the leaves on the trees, in the wintertime, there would still be some, unless they're planting a lot of, you know, pine of some sort. But, so I think there's still a value with the view shed in the wintertime. But getting rid of the steepest part would be, would be nice, if that could be done reasonably. Another thought I have is that...
It's also required by our law.
Well, to try and minimize it. Yes, yes. That would be another good reason, actually. The, what I do like here is, if I understand this correctly here, Steve, this is all, this wall is going to be vegetated to break up its looming aspect. Is that correct? Did I read that right?
Yes, that's correct.
That'll be shrubs and trees, or trees, or just shrubs, or what?
I haven't looked at it that closely yet, but my initial take was that it's mostly trees.
Okay, but I like that idea, I think that helps.
From like in the parking lot, looking at that hill, what it would look like now, what it would look like at the end 10 years.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the now look is not nearly as attractive as the 10-year look, that's for sure, so...
I mean, one of the challenges with grading on the slope is they're, you know, they're close to the 100-foot buffer, and you know, if the goal is to try to reduce some of the steeper slope sections, it may make sense to allow some encroachment within the 100-foot buffer to accomplish that. You know, if there need to, you know, lose some of the fill or soften the grading.
I really wouldn't recommend extending the slopes into the buffer, but we're going to have enough, they are going to have enough trouble, you know, policing up heavy storms. I mean, if we haven't... This summer was a heck of a lot of heavy rainstorms. And there's a lot of erosion in a lot of places that it wasn't before, so we can count on that happening again, I'm sure. But I would suggest here, when you're looking at this, to Greg's reminder, that some of the trees, if you could make some of the trees taller to begin with, and mix it up a little bit more to be initially not as visible over the whole length, you know, I think that would add to the contexture, being, the texture being better than it will be in the first five or 10 years.
Steve, I have a question about rain gardens. Rain gardens is mentioned here, and maybe I missed it, I don't remember having any any more detailed discussions about location and their nature, and how they would function in the context of the overall site. We don't have to have that now. But I assume that we're on top of this, and we're doing our best to maximize this part of the project.
Well, I think the challenge, and, you know, Bob, you know, is the one that's carefully reviewed the stormwater, and the rain gardens are part of the, you know, overall stormwater management program. You know, the biggest challenge is the density of the site, you know, for the footprint, you know, of the buildings, and then trying to fit, you know, stormwater within what's remaining. You know, it is driving to me a lot of the issues with trees and, you know, potential water quality and other issues. You know, because it's just such a concentrated, you know, development, and there's limited space to where they can, you know, they're taking a building down to, you know, create a stormwater practice, you know, because they don't have anywhere else that they can do it.
Keep in mind, too, the stormwater, all the rain gardens have to be based on soils, and they did an extensive amount of testing. And you just can't put them where you think you could. They've got to go where the soils are feasible.
Yeah, and they're trying to balance the volume and water quality, you know, the two components, so... I mean, it's difficult. I mean, if you had a smaller footprint overall, it would give them more flexibility, but, you know, you know, that's, you know, that's something that we've, you know, been wrestling with each time we review it, is how to make sure that, you know, they're meeting the needs for stormwater and still balancing some of the other environmental effects.
So, the, what I see here at the larger scale, because that's kind of drawing this is, are the retention areas, which are, I still refer to them as bomb creators, but...
I remember the rain garden is up on the far left, the next one, over by the auditorium, I think that's one of the rain garden areas, that's what they proposed.
And is there any way to expand on that?
In terms of adding more?
Yeah.
We could ask them to look at it. I mean, they have to, you know, and Bob can go into more detail, but they, you know, they need to balance, you know, a certain amount of water quality features as well as, you know, volume, so...
And I looked at the stormwater report, and they did a pretty good job of it. So keep in mind, a lot of the water they have to divert away from Bedford Road, because of the flooding there over the years. So, you know, the rain garden, to me, is only good for water quality, which is great, don't get me wrong, it's good to do. But it's not too great for the volume and the flooding.
So then there's reference to cisterns?
Right, those are just for storage, and they release it and collect it and divert it to the west.
And so we have those located in the plan?
Oh, absolutely. The cisterns are the undergrounds, I believe, ones here.
Okay.
And the other one's over there, right? It's an infiltration system.
Right, that's right, okay.
I mean, they hold an enormous amount of water, but it's really basically nothing more than a glorified subsurface retention system, which holds the water until it builds up to a certain elevation, and then it's diverted to the west towards the sawmill.
Okay, thanks.
I'm just curious about something. How effective are trees in treating sidewalk runoff?
Not that effective that I know of, but, I mean, I think they needed another sentence to probably explain.
Well, they're actually, there are a series of measures that are credited with certain water quality benefits. And the planting of a tree adjoining a sidewalk is an accepted measure, because the tree will, if the sidewalk is pitched correctly, will absorb the water from the sidewalk runoff and not allow it to run further off.
Okay, so then that will be part of the design to make sure that the water flows properly, and it'll be maintained and everything?
Yeah, where it's being taken credit for. If it's uphill of the sidewalk, it's not taking the runoff from that sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
I believe the D E P gives you so much credit per tree.
I don't know if you recall, but when they did the work down on 117, you know, the number of trees that they had to put in was kind of based on one of D E P's recommendations for that practice, you know, to make sure that they had, you know, sufficient uptake of, you know, excess volume.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members?
I have a couple.
Sure.
This, Sabrina, it may be technically this is right, but the Wallace Auditorium-
Correct.
Is listed as a recreational facility, is that right?
This is the first time we've seen it listed as a recreational facility. They were giving it, in, in the environmental analysis, they were giving a summary of all of the facilities on site. Because it is a place of public gathering, it is seen as, not necessarily a recreation, an active recreation, but it is a public-
But it doesn't belong in the category, does it? Technical category of a recreational facility? If there, if, I mean, if there are some credits that accrue to the project, overall project, because it's put in that category, it seems inappropriate.
It is more of a community facility.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have another, I have a question, you have more?
Uh, well, I, yeah, I have a general comment about the Wallace, but it's-
I was just gonna go ahead.
So, okay, so, um, we've been, this auditorium, the, the history of this auditorium, the, the town history, right, of this auditorium is that when the very first schemes were presented for the residential component of Chapel Crossing, the auditorium wasn't in it. It was, it was, had been demolished for the sake of residential. And this planning board, working with, with the developer, with Felix, worked to do some sketches to see if we could get the units, the number of units in there, and save the auditorium. And the Summit Greenfield was gracious enough to go along with us to see if that was a proposal that the town was willing to take up. And the town did, and I think it's, I mean, the success is just wonderful, I think. It's turned out really well, in terms of the facility, I think, and its use and so on. But we've been looking at this, on these drawings, excuse me, as a carve-out. And I'm, I don't remember any time where we have, and maybe I missed the meeting, but I would, I would have remembered if it happened, where we have actually, this board has dealt with that as part of an integral master plan for, for the, for the residential area and for Chapel Crossing as a whole. It's a, it's a really important piece of this puzzle, just in terms of its use, and its, its stature in the community, its growing stature in the community. And it seems to me that it's also potentially, also just physically integral to this neighborhood. And for some, I, I don't know why, I don't need to know why, but I would like to know when we are going to be able to take that on. And because this developer's moving ahead, and they, you know, they have their rights to go ahead. And we, it seems to me, are not engaging their process in a way in which our process will actually end up with the best master plan, the best facility located, the way the facility is located in this neighborhood. We haven't seen anything. I'm not saying that, suggesting the staff hasn't done great work, but, but we haven't seen it. And so it seems to me that it's, we had, it has not been presented to us as part of a working thing, as far as I remember. So I, it seems to me that this, that it's time for us to, to take these two things. It's really not just an out parcel, the way that McDonald's would be in a shopping, in a shopping center. This really is an integral part of this, of this neighborhood. So I guess I'm suggesting or asking if it's appropriate for us to take this on in a more direct way. And if so, can we advance it so that we can still work with, with the developer as they're developing their plans?
Well, isn't this Les really part of the subdivision application that we've been looking for?
It is, and maybe this is a good point to talk about, how the three applications that have been mentioned tonight by the applicant relate to each other. He's mentioned the site plan, which we spent most of the time on. He's mentioned a master plan for the entire site. And he's also mentioned a re-subdivision of the East Village parcel into 92 lots. So it's important to understand how these things relate to each other. Sequentially, to me, you would do the master plan of the site first. Then you would do the re-subdivision of the East Village parcel, second, and finally, the site plan. Now, given that, there are a number of prerequisites before those initial approvals can be granted. The applicant has already indicated that they are going to need amendments to the MFPD boundary. They need an amendment to the, the Office Park boundary. And all that has to be, those amendments have to be granted before the planning board can grant a subdivision. So those are town board proceedings, there are amendments to the zoning, there are referrals to the planning board, all of which have to take place before that can happen. In addition, there are a number of actions, is the MFPD boundary line, the OPRAD boundary line, and also the BRO 20 boundary line for the 200 building also has to be adjusted. So all of those things have to be done before we could get to a consideration of the master subdivision, because the lots would have to be set before we could do that. So to answer quickly your question, that's where you're going to get your teeth into the Wallace Auditorium parcel, and how it relates to the rest of the subdivision, the master subdivision. And that will have to happen before any approval of the site plan.
So, okay, great, now who, who-
I got a few other things, but you-
But let me just follow up.
Sure.
So who's, who's the prime actor now on that?
On the subdivision?
On, on-
The master plan.
On integrating the design of wherever the, the lines end up. I don't care where the lines end up, somebody needs to care, I don't care. I care, I only care where the lines end up, depending on how they affect the design. I would rather see the master plan come first, then you figure out where the lines go.
Right, yeah.
And I don't see any integration of planning or design yet. At least, this board hasn't seen it, as far as I know, in solving that particular problem, from which then you draw the subdivision lines.
Well, I can only talk about the legal aspects of it, I'll defer to staff on the planning aspects of it and design aspects of it. But I was just pointing out to you that in terms of sequence, we've got to start making progress on the master subdivision. And in order to make progress on that master subdivision, a lot of work that has to happen before the town board, in order to get to the point where the planning board could consider the established boundary line. Second of all, there's a number of other items that involve amendments to either the preliminary development concept plan, the finding statements, the planning board resolutions, town board resolutions, parking management plans, that related to these changes, that'll also have to be obtained before we get to the end of the day for a site plan approval on this East Village. So there is an enormous amount of work that needs to be done, much of which will be generated in the town board. Ultimately, a lot of it will come here, we're kind of like the last stop, as opposed to the first stop to get these opinion, these prerequisites done. The applicant is prepared, and I'll ask them to, if they were submitted to the planning board, an outline of what these issues are and who's got responsibility for them. I just wanted to go quickly over it for the planning board, so they understand that there are a number of things that have to be done before we can make, the planning board can make any decisions on any of the three applications.
And I think, didn't we have, we have a sheet, don't we have a schedule put together?
Yes, that's just, that's why I referenced, that the applicant has prepared something. There was one omission, they're gonna take care of it, and then we'll ask them to rec, to circulate it to the board.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, there's two different-
Yeah, mine is with the CL conditions.
There's two different matrix-
Yeah, there's two different matrices.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob's is, is this, is the-
Conditions.
Conditions of approval.
Right.
The matrix that Les is referring to has to deal with different things that need to happen in order to facilitate consideration of approval of all of the elements of this project.
Right.
Let me speak to the parcel, the boundaries around the auditorium a moment, because the town, the town board, as the future property owner, has been looking at boundaries. Bob and I have been reviewing boundaries from a technical sense for the town board. That was an item for joint discussion tonight with the town board. I, I think if you want to speak to the design in relation to the East Village, that's your board's purview, to raise that and discuss it. Les is correct, it does go with the master subdivision, and that's really when we start talking about that. But if there are certain design elements that you want to bring to light tonight, you know, as staff, we can convey them to the town board.
So let me see if I can, I have no idea, because I have, I see lines on a drawing here, right? I mean, I, I, just to make my, try and make my point again, I have no idea what I'm looking at. I have no idea how to judge it, because it's, it never has been presented to us, the design of it. Again, forget where the lines are for now. The design of it has, if Les is mistaken, never been presented to us as a planning body to look at with respect to the overall planning of the site. When we work with the developer for the relationship between buildings in the, in the retail area, we look at all these things. Relationship with the residential area to the retail area, we look at all these things. And they, we consider them very carefully, grading and landscaping and all those things. This is an out parcel, this is like a mystery to us, and what's, what's curious to me is that it's our effort. It's the town's parcel, and the town is, is doing this, and it seems to me that, that is advancing it. And now we're, if, now it's being posed to us, well, if you have some concerns, let us know. I don't even know what concerns to have, because we aren't even part of the process yet. And I completely respect Les's process to get through the technical side of this and get these things in place, for us formally to be able to address some of these things. But I don't want it to be deliberate to us as something which is fait accompli. Okay, here are the parcel lines, and because the parcel lines are this way, this is the way the grades have to go. And because this is where the grades have to go, this is how you get in the building, and this is where this, the, what's, what's there for us to do? Right? So before we get to that point, it seems to me there is a planning function that we could assist in, that we have an obligation to be part of, I think.
I actually didn't think we had a say on it, because I would love to do like a little outdoor space there that could do, like, they could do stuff at nighttime outdoors that, you know, and we never even, I didn't even think that was on the table. Now, maybe there is something we could do.
I, 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 I promise you that if this were Summit Greenfield's or Toll Brothers' parcel, we would be all over that thing.
Yep.
We would be all over it, and it would be, and I, I think it'd work out great, because we have a really terrific relationship, I think, with, with these folks.
Felix, do you need more practice?
Pardon me?
Do you need more practice?
You guys are the boss, tell us.
No, actually, my point was, was, was not to congratulate Felix on anything.
So, so, so if I may-
Redact that statement.
Yes.
But, but my, my point is, I think my point's made, I mean, I just don't, I don't understand.
Well, I, I think that if, that if you wish to be part of that process, probably a memo to the town board, making them aware of where you are in your process and, and kind of the deliberations you want to have over that parcel. You know, historically, it's a, now considered a town parcel, or will be a town parcel once the subdivision is conducted. If you have certain interests in that boundary, you know, I know that Bob and I have been communicating and including the planning board in our technical recommendations, but there hasn't been any planning discussion. And, you know, we had been working on an attempt to have a joint discussion between you and the town board to have these discussions. It did not happen tonight. That's not to say it can't happen in the future. You know, I'm sitting here going, how do we procedurally make this occur, happen? Because I understand what you guys are, are asking, and I'm just trying to figure out how to facilitate that.
And I think, just for the record, I believe that in this rendition, I think the applicant made a few changes. In fact, as I recall, I'm not sure I pointed this correctly. Didn't he make some changes, Andy, to this, this, and we took off, we lobbed off a couple of, or at least one building here at this end to accommodate the auditorium property? He made some-
The boundaries moved out from where they were.
So the applicant has really accommodated, you know, the, the town, but to Tom's point, we haven't done much after that. So, and I think it's a very, very good point to, to make. And I think it would be appropriate, then, to, to draft a memo to the town board and let them know, let's talk about this. This is an important issue.
At least that would open the door.
Yep.
No, thank you.
Do you have comments?
Uh, yeah, I still have a few, I think.
Sure.
Let's see here. I guess, I guess one of the things is that, we talk about sewer use and water use. And the numbers seem to be lower, and, and, but I'm not clear exactly what, what I read as to, well, there seemed to be some value placed on the 31, you know, special housing units in the 200 building. But the other units don't seem to be included in the overall calculation. So am I missing something? Do we have these calculations right? Or, or are we just doing this sort of like, it almost feels like a, this is one piece, which I understand. But then there's a few things that are added into it, like the 31 affordable housing units. And, but I, I just don't have a feel that we have the overall water balance and sewer balance for the, for the entire site. Am I missing something? Did I forget something? Is it, is it packed in a, in a parcel that I have in the basement?
Uh, we, we believe we've tracked all the components, but we can, we can be wrong. So if that's a, we'll review that and-
To elaborate on that, because there are some charts in there, but I'm a little bit uncertain of the timelines, because you refer to sewage and water in the 2015 preliminary amendment to one of the, to, to one of the finding statements. But it was unclear to me if at that point, we have the 11 extra bedrooms in the Cupola building. And so how, I wanted to just make sure that the 11 extra bedrooms in the Cupola building are figured into the overall sanitary limit that the Westchester County Board of Legislators have put on the property, so that we're sure we're dealing with the right numbers.
Yeah, I think maybe an overall chart, since you have done it, most likely. You know, it would be nice to have just the overall chart to, to say, oh, here's what it was in 2015, and how, this is what it is now. Look, we've managed to reduce the flow 200 gallons a day because we did this, this, and this. Or it's actually 300 gallons per day over 2015, but it's under the overall numbers, just-
Andy, I think it's, I think it's table one.
Yeah.
That does this, and I had the same question. I don't know how we're gonna be adding these units and then ending up with less sewage and water usage. Didn't make sense, but-
So we'd like to know what innovations you have put in place to reduce the water flow.
That was the county's question as well.
Yes.
Ah, I see.
Well, the county was also imploring us to try to find different ways to even reduce it even further, of course.
Correct.
There's this capacity issue, so, okay.
Another environmental comment is that this, until it gets all grown up with all the vegetation, it's gonna be a heat island. You know, we've got trees in the parking lot, and that's all excellent, and that's gonna help. But it, in the early years, it's gonna be a heat island. And that made me start thinking, well, gee, if it's a heat island, what can we do about that? Trees are good, I don't have any other ideas beyond that. But then I just thought, well, gee, we have enough roof structure here. Has any consideration been given to solar panels on, on the roofs for either the commercial buildings? Or, in this particular case, sticking to this project, you know, for this, these housing units? Because for, they're gonna be open in the sun, there's a, there's a lot of energy that should be available. It's not like a lot of houses on these back roads that Tom was referring to, where there is no use for solar, because the leaves take it all up. And so, you know, I wouldn't want to do it if it's not economical. I don't know whether the state grants are still available or not, but if it, it can be done in a, in a reasonably tasteful way, with back roofs or, you know, something like that, you know, then I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't think about it unless it's just not economical to do it for each fee simple unit.
It's not part of the proposal now, that the roofs are smaller than house roofs, so they're, you know, limited space to provide panels. I can review it with the group and get a more complete answer, but no, they're not, they're not proposed.
Okay, and I could, I could see that for these, but what's the story, what would be the story for the commercial area?
The commercial area is-
Not part of this discussion today?
Or this application.
I see. But then that's a thought that you might want to consider, you know, for the broader roofs, where there is more space.
Did with the color of the roofing tiles help in any regard? If you went with a lighter color on the shingle, as opposed to a darker color on the shingle?
I don't, I don't-
With the heat effect?
I don't know, I mean, it would, I'm still waiting for someone to invent- I mean, it would, I'm still waiting for someone to invent roofing tiles that turn white in the summer and then turn black in the winter. And no one's come up with that yet.
The ERB might have a problem with that. Dave Huester?
Ah, is there anything else? There's always something else. Let's see here, where am I? Bent, bent. While I, oh yeah, on page 19, you have a small typo where you say, based on the estimated 2,016 pounds of trash per month, per unit.
A lot of trash.
That is a lot of trash, and I don't think the basements would be able to hold it. The, on page 20, you talk about an amenity building with, for the pool, there's a fitness room, a meeting room, an outdoor pool, and are there going to be change lockers? If you have a pool, aren't you, usually, don't you have change lockers?
I think they have maybe a limited number. I think it's expected that most people just go to the pool from their unit. Go home. It's a small pool.
Well, I mean, it is a small pool. I know that the pool at the country club in Mount Kiesko is relatively small also, and they have about, I don't know for sure, but I think it's about 15 change lockers. But I also have seen where people would like to have a smaller locker to put their safety, you know, safely keep their wallets and other things. So that maybe that would be a small amenity that could be added economically without taking a lot of space. I guess my last thing is that, you know, while I appreciate the Georgian style and, you know, that we're, it's not all dark stone or dark colors and it's white and everything from an architectural point of view, I'm still not feeling, I'm not feeling that it's really that attractive yet or as attractive as it could be. And so I was wondering if, in the course of this, that will there be other colors for the clapboard other than white?
Did you read my notes?
Yes, I did. And I want to thank you for leaving them out.
I was going to follow up. I have two more questions.
So that that might give more individuality? It's just paint?
My impression was that when you, even when you had the sketch up there and you had those various versions, the first question was, is there going to be a minimum number of versions that we will see, no matter what customers might decide? But my comment to Dick, when I was looking at it, when you had it up there, was sort of like being at the eye doctor. Is this better than this one? I was looking at the thing, and I couldn't really tell the difference between some of those layouts, and it was so similar that...
They're all the same.
They're all the same, sort of. So echoing Dick's comment and perhaps what Greg will say.
Oh, I don't know how to flip back to that slide, but, I mean, the genesis of that slide was strictly to show material. It was not to show, delve into architectural details of a building. I mean, frankly, we got to lock in on a site plan prior to us really picking up the architecture and moving it forward at this point. I mean, this is all stuff that's being developed from the ground up.
That's fine, and that's great. But the earlier we give you our comments and thoughts...
Understood.
...the more you'll be able to blend them into the whole thing.
Yeah, and our conversation started almost about a year ago now, is, you know, there's a balance that we want to strike between having enough variation in the homes that we build versus it, there being an appearance of a patchwork quilt on the job. But, you know, we're certainly sensitive to there being variation, whether it's driven by us, whether it's driven by our customers, whether it's something that the board wants us to integrate into our designs. You know, we're open to all of that.
So my question...
But when you look at this, excuse me, Greg, when you look at this, the fundamental shape of each building is the same.
Correct. And that won't be the case at all.
I see.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have, so for instance, again, this was strictly to show different, how you could take the same thing and, you know, change not only material but where you place that material. And again, we're looking at just front elevations, not side elevations or not rear elevations. So for instance, we'll have in any one location for a unit that would sit on the end of a run of the building, an end unit. We will have potentially three or four different of those, you know, plans that could accommodate that location. And of those plans, we'd most likely have three or four different facades that we could apply to that floor.
Okay, so you would have clapboard and stone, but the clapboard might be different colors. The stone might be different kinds of stone.
Yeah, again...
I wouldn't want to have just all the same stone.
We want to, we understand there's a balance that we got to strike here, but we're happy to get down to that granular level of detail. But again, we, we're still talking about footprints and trying to, you know, it's hard for us to pick that up and move it if we're talking about, you know, moving roadways and it's...
Oh, I, well, I, I agree. And nobody's going to ask you to design all these units right now. I mean, nobody should, I think. I think what we're just looking for is confirmation about an approach and an attitude.
Yeah, sure. And we can, there's additional materials that we can share, and candidly, you know, we haven't brought those forward because, one, we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner that we haven't even really been able to land on with a plan. And, two, we didn't want, we don't want to muddy up a conversation where we thought that we had satisfied the board's concern about everything looking exactly the same and really us telling you how we were going to approach the issue, the homes and handle the material. And we thought we kind of checked that box, and we could kind of move forward.
Okay, so you would agree then that at some point in the near future, when you get to the, this granular discussion we're having, that we'll have the footprints established? And with the footprints established, then there will be certainly variations in the stone, variations in the clapboard, variation in colors, and even variations in roof lines or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent. But again, we just don't want to get the cart...
Don't need them now. Just want to make sure we're on the same page going forward.
Well, I'm not sure I am on that page. There are, there are great neighborhoods. Go to Georgetown in Washington DC, which are like almost all brick with the exception of some clavbered buildings here and there. And they're pretty close to being pretty much all the same brick, and maybe that's because it was built all in about the same time when that brick was available locally. And it's a wonderful neighborhood. And what makes it, I mean, it's charming for a lot of other reasons too. Don't get me wrong, it's just not the brick and the uniformity of it. But what makes it all so special is those, I think, is those, are those buildings that aren't brick, that are clavbered or are white, for example, or painted a dusty green. And it's the uniformity of the approach and the attitude that sets the character of the neighborhood, in my opinion. And then it's the special things that provide a little bit of contrast and a little bit of identity on that particular, that block or that corner. So I'm actually more of a fan of less, fewer materials, I think, with highlights of contrasting material. Now, you got two completely different opinions from the same board on this subject, and I imagine that Greg may have, probably has yet a third.
Yeah, we would, we would gravitate more towards your position where we, you know, we would like to, you do run, it's very hard to execute a lot of variation very well. When something that kind of developed organically over time and you try to replicate that, you know, in a...
Usually not authentic, wouldn't you?
Correct.
It's clearly not authentic.
So we know what we do well, and it's typically more towards what you're speaking of.
So Greg, if we haven't exhausted all your thoughts by interrupting you...
I think the answer, the question's been answered. When I was looking at Figure 14, which doesn't, this in the book is a lot better than that. You know, I just saw every door was red. Well, you know, I saw every shutter was black.
And those are just for own internals, so we can work on a plan to make it super clear, front door. Yeah, yeah, we're not painting all the front doors red.
I envisioned that not everything was going to be, you know, an English red and Presbyterian church kind of thing. Okay. And I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Dick?
I'm done.
Sheila, anything?
I wanted to touch for a minute on the school children, the issue of this generation of schoolchildren on the development. Almost for the whole life that we've been looking at this, school population has been declining. And I don't know if that's a trend that's going to continue or not, but it's certainly the condition that we're sitting in right now. So clearly, the issue of whether this, you know, the extra bedrooms would generate three more schoolchildren or six more schoolchildren are not the make and break numbers for the school district, at least I don't think so. So I think, you know, when we're looking at that number, we have to go back to the original thinking of why the bedrooms were capped in the first place, why the town board put those caps into the finding statements and ask whether it was because they were looking to cap the overall density of the site, which was guided in part by bedroom count, whether they were looking to allow for future development in other parts of towns if we, you know, do infill development elsewhere and have generation of schoolchildren from other large-scale projects. I don't think, I'm not answering those questions. I'm throwing them out on the table, but I don't think the question is, are we generating three more schoolchildren or six more schoolchildren by adding these extra bedrooms? And I do also want to understand, though, if we're including the 11 bedrooms in the Kupla Building too, but I'm assuming you're going to do all that analysis when you...
Correct. Correct. You know, we definitely need to, I need to verify the information that they're providing, understand how it compares to what was analyzed, where the gaps are, the information that was provided. There's still some missing information. I kind of have to piece it together. But my understanding of the limitation on bedrooms related to the sewer function on the site, the amount of sewer being generated from the site, which needed Westchester County Health Department approval to enter into the county sewer system. There is a sewer pipe with capacity that, and they were only approved, they were approved by the county to enter into the sewer district with a certain flow number. In the county's eyes, the bedrooms dictate the amount of flow. The schoolchildren is a different issue, and typically, you know, when the planning board is reviewing subdivisions and other projects, we look at schoolchildren's and school capacity. I don't know that there is a concern here with school capacity. It's really about comparison to what was analyzed previously, knowing that there has been a drop in schoolchildren, that there is a leveling out of that number, but are we ever going to grow to where it was? You know, projections are projections. You know, school capacity, we know where we are, we know how the school district is functioning. We have to verify that the supporting data is true and go from there. But really, that bedroom count number, I believe, was for sewer flow.
Okay. Just, you know, for what it's worth, I think it's come up in conversation through a couple of past meetings. The more flexibility there is on bedrooms, the more flexibility we have on site conditions and what product we're putting on the site. You know, a lot of, like we've talked about grading in the past, a lot of, because again, this is a neo-traditional neighborhood where your grade is set at your front door and your grade is set at your garage door, and you have two points of entry now on, you know, either side of that home. You know, how that grading impacts, you know, the number of steps going into the house is super critical to a person who would be more welcoming of a two-bedroom home, whether that person's an empty nester, a heavy never nester, or a recent retiree, or a family that's launching their kids off to, off to college. So, you know, a lot of these issues that we're talking about now as far as the number of steps on the main driveway from, from the main drive across from Lifetime to those front doors, and now also on the backside of the project where the retaining wall is. We're just, you know, in order to accommodate the footprint that we need that would take a first-floor master bedroom home, we have certain, you know, we're just, we're finger-cuffed in a couple spots, so, you know, for what it's worth.
I'm a little confused. It seems to me that your preference overall would be to construct three-bedroom units?
It would certainly allow us, you know, greater, so if we look at the plan, there's some 28-foot, 29-foot wide units or some 32-foot wide units. I mean, the larger footprinted homes are typically the smaller overall square footage homes, but they have the most, you know, first-floor area because there's a lot of stuff you got to accommodate on that first floor. Whereas if we have all bedrooms upstairs, all of a sudden, you get a much more economical, you know, first-floor plan. And really, how does that kind of work?
Would that be consistent with what your market information shows in terms of people wanting to be on the first floor of the master bedroom?
Well, so for us, the really, the market of, this is an interesting community. You know, what we find is people who want to live in communities that are kind of integrated with other uses around them, you know, be them recreation, dining, those sorts of things, they're kind of on either end of the spectrum, right? You get a younger, more active group, and then you get an older, more active group, right? And they could be 25 years apart in age, but they're kind of looking for the same thing. But again, here, it's very hard to market a home at this, what this price point will be with two bedrooms to someone who is, you know, 40 years and younger, who may have a kid or two kids, or it just doesn't work that way.
Well, I think this is interesting to hear, don't you think, that more bedrooms might give them more flexibility in terms of their footprint and some of the development? And if it's not an issue with regard to schools, but it is only with sewage and water capacity, I guess sewage mostly, perhaps it's something to be looked at. I don't know. I was under the impression along with Sheila that schools were also an issue back when this first started.
I don't want to say, I don't want to say it's not an issue. We really just need to look into it.
I thought it was a driving issue back, way back in the day.
Yeah, well, it was.
Well, back in the day, it may have been, but as we were going through this generation of this project, it was about the sewer flow.
Yeah. I think that's the more critical one, and I think that's all good. And I agree with Bob that if a few more three-bedroom ones make some other things better, I don't have a problem with it, although I think there should be some words added, you know, in the description that say, well, gee, you know, you've got it almost there. We recognize that enrollment is down. We may have three. I would suggest you think in terms of, well, it might be six or nine. Yeah, I don't think it matters too awfully much.
I think density of development was a big issue in 2011.
Density was.
If you recall, the applicant was seeking many, many, many more units than the plan, than the town board ultimately approved.
Right.
So I think that part of the consideration was the overall density.
Well, and it has to be handled by the town board.
I think one of the issues I had on that question, and it might be really for Andy, I know there are statements that are made in the narrative that suggested, for example, that, you know, three-bedroom units would not have any impact on tax assessments, it would not have any impact on number of vehicles. Where's that coming from? What is the supposition that leads us to conclude, or what's the information that you used to conclude those kinds of, those kinds of statements?
Well, in terms of the traffic analysis, it's a town home unit. Doesn't the, the traffic generation numbers are not fine enough to count one-bedroom towns and two-bedroom towns and three-bedroom towns? It's a single-family home versus town home. So that's, that's the genesis of that.
Wouldn't there be, though, some sort of marginal difference when you have a three-bedroom unit, understanding that you're going to have kids and you might see therefore an additional car in that, in that unit?
If you think about them individually, you could imagine that, but not in the traffic ratios that are used for analyses.
Well, we have, what, how many increased? Nine increases? 11 increases in three-bedrooms? So in the aggregate, doesn't that amount to something?
There's no, there's no, there's no factor that's used in the traffic analysis.
Traffic planning factors, standards that are used don't, don't get, don't get to that finer gray.
Okay, okay. And the same with tax assessment? Again, is that the same thing? It just doesn't get to that finer gray?
Well, tax assessment, we'll see what the assessor comes up with, but the square footage of the unit is not really changed.
Okay. I had a couple other real quick questions, just for my own education. The maximum disturbance at any one time of five acres, is that a town, a town limitation? Is that a DEP limitation?
That's a D E C. New York State D E C establishes that.
Do we have any kind of protocol established for once we have this all set in terms of fertilizers and treatments on lawn areas?
For Stephen on that.
We would ask for a maintenance and monitoring plan similar to what we did for the retail. We would ask for the residential as well.
Okay. I think one of the things that we did talk about, and I think Steve alluded to it, was as we look at alternatives on the B R M... as we look at alternatives on the berm, the construction of the berm and how high it has to go, et cetera, we, I think we should have some information for alternatives in terms of what some sort of blend might, might lead to in terms of truckloads after we brought off, and, you know, what that balance might be. So again, I think that's more for, for staff to look at in terms of their alternatives, but I think that's something that can be useful to us as we look at this. The wall construction, you have walls that are, it seemed to be, for example, the stone wall, which looks very handsome, but at the same time, it's, there's a lot of mass there. Is there any way that you can break the wall up in stages, and also, as we've seen in other places, where you can put vegetation, shrubs, you know, on, on one level of the wall, then continue the wall at another level, again, just breaking the mass? I think in some cases, the wall is, what, fourteen, eighteen feet high?
It peaks at around that, I don't remember the exact number. But the, we presented a visual showing the planting in front of the wall.
Right, in front, I see, yes.
In, in this case, I think it's, it's a matter of opinion, but it's better served to plant the trees on the ground where they have a better place to grow than on a shelf, intermediate shelf. And that just extends the depth of the wall. It's taken, the wall's gonna be in, is holding up an alley on the backside.
Right.
So that is fixed. If you step it forward, just reduces the amount of ground. We tried to use, where it will be visible from the loop road, this actual stone facing, and we believe that in combination with the, with the vegetation, that will break up that view. The, the planting is also not, you know, a straight shot, so you're going to get variation in the placement of the plants relative to the wall and also types of trees.
Well, perhaps you could just maybe show some sort of visual alternative and see what it might be. I'm, I'm not suggesting that we reduce the, the plantings that you have there, we'll be supplementing some sort of step in the wall, so.
Just to add to that, it would be good to know how wide that planting median is between the wall and the road-
Sure.
-so that we can understand numbers. If we break up the wall, then what are we left with for-
Yeah, we can show a section through that.
Yeah.
Illustrate that.
I think you mentioned the lighting will be at three thousand Kelvin, and we usually look at something around twenty-five hundred, especially with residential, for the range on, on those lamps.
Yeah, this was a combination, when we had the first discussion, or the discussion during the retail, there was a balancing between the, the warmth of the, and the, and the output of the lamp. And it was determined by your board at that time that that was important for the retail. We, we stepped that down, we can look and see if we can step it down further from three thousand.
There was some mention about emergency generators, that they will be restricted, et cetera. Will that be something that the HOA will either restrict or prohibit in the future? Something that will be built into the legal document?
I don't know that, there, there are no, there are no emergency generators, you mean for an individual unit?
No, I mean, right now, obviously, you're proposing that there are not going to be any, but in perpetuity, are we going to have some sort of limitation, restriction built into the documents?
Yeah, just trying to think of whether, you know, we, you know, I can think of maybe, you know, in the last three years, four years, maybe one occurrence of somebody requesting it. And it was on a job where, you know, it was technically a, you know, town home job, but the homes were forty-five feet wide by eighty feet deep. I mean, they were massive homes, you know, that's not something that we typically get requested.
No, I, I think with this situation, with this kind of density, I think it's something that we would wanna say-
It's kinda like you just, you don't have a place to put them. So what we will do is, some people will ask for like a connection in the garage, so they know if there's, if there is a storm and the power goes out, that they have the ability to plug something in into their, into the garage that can power, you know, some, you know, key appliances in their home when the power's out.
Sorry, let me just be clear about that. It plugs into the house panel? The generator plugs into the house panel so that the house panel-
Yeah, there'll be like a separate receptacle, yeah, right, and it'll be something that's, correct, it's not like a permanent-
It's not a portable generator.
It's not a portable generator, it's not a generator that'll kick on and off.
No, I understand, but it plugs into the house panel.
Given, given the price of these houses, and particularly the older people, the trend now is to, I see in my neighborhood, almost everybody has a generator, a standby generator, not the portables.
Oh.
I don't understand what you mean by a plug-in connection, since they don't have power, what do they plug into?
A generator.
Yeah, the generator, yeah, it's an output.
Oh, because it takes the power and puts it into the house again?
Yeah, like you have one in your garage.
So, but then do you have, do you have gas, a gas generator inside a garage?
No, they'll have to, I mean, there's safety, right? I mean, they gotta exhaust them to the outside, but, yeah, they're just a temporary, you gotta get, you know, someone's gotta get by, you know.
Have something much, much safer gasoline. Well, I just, I just wanna be sure I understand this.
It has to bend, though.
The generator sits on a panel outside, it's a, it's a risk.
No.
It's just a portable generator.
Which is like you go to Home Depot.
Yeah, yeah, this is in case of emergency, break glass.
No, I got, I got, I got one, I got that, I got one. That's, it, it's a pain to start, but I got one.
Yeah, it's like the lawnmower that never pull, like the snowball that never pulls, yeah.
That's okay. But mine, you plug appliances into it with extension cords. There are other systems where the generator plugs into the house circuits-
Correct.
-and runs the house circuits. So is, is that the kind of-
That's the one I'm referring to.
-utility you'll have in these homes?
Not, this is like a, I mean, this is a, I'm talking about, this is not a normal request, I'm just trying to think of times that it, it has come up. I mean, this, we do this, in this type of product, it's very few and far between.
Would somebody ask for it, you can provide it?
If we can accommodate, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Usually, there's a thing you do in the panel, because you have to throw the switch so you don't have the power coming in both sides.
They don't like it when the power comes back on, everything blows up.
I think the less is point, once you do one, you're gonna do a lot.
And I would think the standalone ones outside, like you go to coverage, right? You don't put on a pad and they'll start throwing off calculations.
Particularly depending on the population.
And there was one reference, I think you had a picture of your, your sign, and we don't normally in this town have the, the builder endorse the, on the sign, who did it, like an artist or something. So, I mean, you may wanna label the, the development, I suppose, but I don't think we normally like to see the name of the, the artist who has put together the development.
Yeah, no, so, but this will be, we'll, we'll, we'll correct this. If you drive around, most of our projects in Westchester, our, our signage is minimal. We believe kinda less is more in this market.
Sure, I certainly understand during construction, but once you finish.
Correct, yeah.
During sales.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, most times, we'll do, you know, we'll, we'll integrate it somehow into an entry, you know, pier or something where it's just a brass sign or whatever.
There's a couple of cutaways, not there. Anyway, there are a couple of cutaways that indicate that you have some fill going up to that loop road. And I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the foundations that are being constructed and the footings there are not gonna be, you know, built on fill. And it looks like, from the cutaway, I'm looking at figure twelve at the top there, it looks like the building is gonna be set back away from the fill, but pretty darn close to the fill. The issue, I think, is we wanna make sure we don't have any-
I would hope you're not building the foundations on the fill.
No, no, it looks like it's, it's, you know, hopefully not. But with all the stuff that's gonna take place, all the activity in terms of grading, I think that's one of the issues, we wanna make sure that we're not building foundations on, on soil that's been moved around. Because the future problems that we have with that is, can be considerable.
I mean, we, I've seen the building inspector okay in certain instances where it's compacted and certified and newly protested, but I wouldn't recommend it because it's quite costly.
Yeah.
And you can do it engineering-wise, but it's costly.
Right. And the last comment I had was, again, echoing some of Steve's comments over the years, and looking at table four, and looking at the size of these significant trees that are being cleared, to the extent that we are not clearing the whole place like a runway and can preserve some of these massive trees, it would be just terrific. There's just no way to replace, you know, we could put up all these little, little things all over the place, but, you know, we have forty-four inch, thirty-two inch giant trees that are being proposed to be cleared, and if their health is good and their condition is good, you know, I just saw, I was, I talked to Bob this afternoon, I saw a segment about the treaty tree down in Austin, Texas, which is now a real community piece, a very important part of the community. And I'm not suggesting that we have those kinds of trees here, but to the extent that the Reader's Digest has been in this town, and this really has historical impact, and, and import, and the Wallaces were very instrumental on, you know, landscape artistry and big contributors to the botanical garden and everything else, it just seems to me to be a crime to, to have to clear some of these. So to the extent that we're clearing these because we're doing basements, and if there's any other way that we can look at these and save them, it's just criminal. But if it's necessary, it's necessary. But it's, when I went through the entire chart, once again, it was really striking to see the size of some of these trees that we're proposing to clear.
We've been, every, every time we look at the plan, we look at the impact on trees and try to minimize.
Okay. Do we have comments for the public on this application?
Yes.
Oh, come on up, yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Robert Gershia, I live on forty Cowden Lane in Chapqua, probably my first planning meeting to be intense. So I really appreciate the conversation, appreciate the presentation that you made, because Mies informs me about what's going on here, and thank you for having all those comments, they were very helpful for me to understand. So I'm here to just talk a little bit about concerns as well as some questions. And I don't expect maybe to answer them now, I don't know how this process works. If I have questions, do you answer them here, or you just listen? But I wanna just go through a couple of points that I've made notes as I heard the discussion this evening. First of all, I get the sense of, you know, from what I've been listening to over the last several years about the original plan and how it's changed, it gets the sense for me from hearing what I heard today, tonight, that there's a little bit of creep going on. And what I mean by creep is sort of like, you know, extension from what was, you know, proposed maybe a few months ago. It's, you know, I look in terms of the boundaries, extending the change in the number of units from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, and maybe that doesn't sound like a big deal, but, you know, I do think it has an impact in, in the town. So adding nine three bedrooms and reducing two bedrooms, and with the projection of forty-six to forty-nine children in the school system, yeah, three children, that's not gonna make a big difference, but I will tell you, as being a prior school board member, I do know the impact of, I'm a school board member here in Chapqua, so I do know the impact of how, you know, the number of children attending schools can affect the budget and ultimately affect the taxes. So it could affect it in terms of the, the child going to what class, maybe change the class size, therefore the number, there's minimum, there's maximum number of students per class size, so depending on the grade, if that changes that, it requires an additional teacher. I mean, you don't know until you actually see it. And yes, there are projections in the school system in terms of population over the next ten years, we used to do that every year to see how, how it's projected. So those projections have been in place, and the, you know, they know what's gonna happen this year and next year, et cetera, at least roughly, except for a couple. So the fact that there's nine additional three bedrooms, you don't know who's gonna buy those bedrooms, or those, those condos, and what the makeup of that household's gonna be. Could be instead of three children, could be ten children, we just don't know. And that could have an impact on the school budget. So I just wanna throw that out, don't know. I don't, I don't think the assumption that it may have very minimal effect on the school budget is, it's not a fair assumption to assume without really going into the detail when you find out what happens. So nine bedrooms, three bedrooms, three bedrooms are not usually for two empty nesters. I mean, somebody's gonna buy that and put the money into it because they, they probably have kids. So I just wanna talk about that a little bit.
I think it's an interesting point also because qualitatively, the location of this development, right next to the high school.
A great high school, by the way.
A great high school. And right next to what's gonna be a dynamic shopping area, maybe, you know, the assumptions and the numbers that we normally look at, we're gonna see something higher anyway, just because of the location, the proximity and the attractiveness of it. Whether that, you know, obviates the four-hundred-thirty reduction, I don't think it gets that, to that level, but it's, I think it's an interesting question to, to ask.
Well, and also the, the tax levy, the tax assessment on a condo is very different than a single-family home, so-
These are for a single-family.
So they're a single-family, okay, so that's, I didn't understand that. Okay, so it would be the similar type of situation. But it will, it could potentially impact the school system in terms of cost. So I just wanna throw that out.
Yeah, just the other, the other point, Andy, your folks went to the school district?
Prominent.
Pardon me?
Spoke to the district.
Spoke to them? Okay, so you got input from them to make the calculations you made?
We did to adjust for the, the additional bedrooms.
Did I proceed?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. A question I have is the, on the presentation here, I don't remember specifically, misunderstanding or seeing where the pool location is, so just be under, you know, where is it? And as a resident of Cowden Lane, the concerns I have are a couple from what I've heard tonight.
We can answer where it is.
Oh, you do have, that's great, if you have the answer.
It's near the front door, the front entrance.
Oh, the front entrance, that's, okay, thank you.
Where their guesthouse is now, it's approximately that.
Yes, all right, thank you for answering that, 'cause I didn't see that in the presentation. So this is a high-density, you know, complex with retail, and as we all know, lots of housing, et cetera. So I guess a couple of things I have concerns about. One is the, and I thank you for bringing up the question, Mr. Kirkwood, about the, the luminate light voltage, whatever that is. At nighttime, depending, with two-hundred-and-thirty-seven trees being removed, and I'm not sure if they're on the wetlands area, you know, in terms of, on the Cowden Lane side, the eastern part of it, that's gonna open up more skylight, right? Yes, there's a lot of vegetation in the, between the eastern, you know, east of the housing and down towards Cowden Lane, and I think I saw, I heard something about remediation, removing invasive plants and replacing them with something else. But I worry about as that, you know, the openness of that, and depending on the lighting with the streetlights, and, and especially if there's a little bit of expansion with the boundary lines, I don't know where those streetlights are going, and it would have potentially an impact on quality of life in terms of nighttime, lighting at nighttime, sort of like when, you know, I bring that up as a concern, in terms of at least where we are living.
A question, Andy, do we have, there will be no light spillage off the property line?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, it's helpful.
It is helpful, thank you for explaining that. Then the question I have next is around runoff. And there's a creek and a pond that sort of is in the wetlands, and we talked a lot about the road widths, and if that road width changes, you know, more, more asphalt and, and what I call artificial landscaping in terms of roadway, et cetera, depending on how this, you know, the questions were asked about, is the road wide enough, are the sidewalks wide enough, all that kind of stuff. And especially with the road that goes behind the condos that's on, on the eastern front, even if it's heavy rains or whatever, I worry about the runoff coming down, depending on what, how the berm is set up, coming down either through erosion or just swallowing the creek and all that's down there. So I bring that up as a concern, 'cause I don't know if, how much work and look has been looked into that with the changes that have been talked, discussed tonight.
Bob, I, I think the, what I heard before is that a lot of the, the water is, in general, just gonna be pushed towards-
Majority of the runoff, the way it's graded that site, than what the DTS had done, they're gonna divert the water away from Cowden and Bedford, and it's going towards the west.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
It goes into these systems, fills up, flows out, and they have an extensive piping network system, which goes to a retention system, which used to be building seven hundred, and then it goes towards the west.
Thank you for explaining that. I hope you appreciate the questions I'm asking here.
No, no, it's fine.
Just a couple more, I only have a couple more or something.
They've not-
Okay. The berm, and I guess there's a retaining wall on that side, eastern, if I heard that correctly, on the, I don't have the slide up there, but it sort of shows the total picture, and I'm thinking about the, the wetlands and everything on, on the eastern side of the property there. So my question about the berm, yeah, so where the, where the greenery is on the eastern side, this sloping down. So depending on how that berm is built, and we talked about the, the fill, is the fill gonna stay or is the fill gonna be carted out? But depending on how that berm is built and how high it is, and therefore the slope, that would be a concern or a question I would have as a homeowner on Cowden Lane, is how much runoff or erosion comes down during certain weather events? How is it being mitigated, if at all? Wasn't clear to me with some of the changes that were discussed tonight, or at least the decisions that need to be made down the road in terms of the height of the berm, what the berm's gonna look like, the slope, et cetera. So I bring that up as just a concern, 'cause from my point of view, I'd love to make sure that we mitigate any type of runoff, erosion, or anything that's gonna come down on that side of the property line. So, okay. And I think I'm almost done here. Trails, I didn't know there were trails. So could someone explain to me that, the purpose of the trails, how the trails work, are they new, are they existing, and they go around the property and around to the, so what is that about?
So there's, there's some old trails, you know, that are in this area right now.
Uh huh.
And that's all I remember. And the trails will be maintained on the property. They do not, they don't go over to Cowden, there's no access from Cowden that I know of, so.
But, but the trails will be available for public use, I believe.
Yes. Right?
Yes. So access would be primarily from the cross, typical crossings properties then?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
And I think they're all contained on your property. They don't go off the property.
Retaining wall, is there a retaining wall and how, if so, how high is it by where the berm is or am I, did I misunderstand?
Well, we don't have that finalized yet, I think, right? Steve and staff are working on this?
Yeah, there's, in some versions, there is a wall right here.
Uh huh.
And then the berm is here and the berm may top...
The wall.
The wall, so it sort of goes like that from the wall, which would then soften what you see. And then there's another retaining wall back here which faces onto this parking area. And it'll be vegetated so that it doesn't look like, you know, someone's building a castle there. It's just...
Okay. Well, so my question's sort of specific to location on the eastern side, the berm. If it's higher than the wall, then that probably looks better than just seeing a retaining wall. That's sort of not as, it doesn't, but I don't know what the, what the plan is, so.
The plan, I don't think it's quite finalized. Andy, you wanna add?
The berm essentially takes the place of the retaining wall on the northern end of that picture. There is a, right above, over here.
Do you have any of those pictures, Andy, that you have in here in terms of the renderings from Cowden?
I do.
Oh, okay.
So there is a section of retaining wall here.
Sir?
Where we don't have...
He's showing where the wall is gonna be.
So the berm is here, you can see the kind of the concentric...
So I was wrong about the berm.
...place of the, of the wall. So there is no wall in that location.
Thank you.
Further south, there is a wall where we don't have as much room to grade without going into the, in both cases, they're fully planted and stabilized.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Traffic question. Additional three bedrooms versus a reduction of two bedrooms, ninety-one structures here, the retail place and everything. I, from a local point of view, I worry about the traffic. I know there's been tons of discussions about traffic. It seems to be some work being done on maybe to mitigate traffic loads. I do worry about it quite a bit. The addition of three bedrooms versus two bedrooms, in my humble opinion, will undoubtedly add traffic because if there are kids, they're gonna drive. If there's two family with two cars or three cars, it's going to add traffic load. I believe the traffic load is going to be pretty significant. I'm not sure how it's gonna work out. I have concerns about it 'cause it's heavy traffic load, especially during school, school season with the buses and everything else. So I certainly hope we take that into consideration in terms of the change from two bedrooms to three bedrooms or things like that that might increase traffic. So I just bring that question up. And then finally, during this whole process, when the building happens, I worry about what I call quality of life when it comes to noise. So will there be construction during the weekends when I wanna enjoy the weekend serenity, a beautiful, you know, rural situation or, you know, suburb situation where I wanna enjoy that and not have to deal with trucks, jackhammers, whatever that may be for a period of months, years, don't know. So will there be restrictions on when the construction can happen? I'm sure there's sort of guidelines within the town, maybe the state and the county. I don't know what they are, but I do worry about it.
I think we set up extensive guidelines that are specific to this site, but also that are consistent with our, our noise ordinances, et cetera. So there are limitations. I can't say it's going to be weekend-free. I think they're permitted to work on Saturdays, aren't they?
Saturday, but Sunday I believe not.
So I'm not, you know, Saturdays, it's unfortunate, I get it, but hopefully it's not gonna go till eight o'clock at night when we're gonna be, you know, we may be entertaining outdoor barbecue, et cetera. I just don't know what those are, so it'd be nice to know a little bit about that. If you could appreciate the fact as a local resident who's paying, you know, good property taxes, the value of the home, wanna be able to use it and entertain, it's just something to consider, so I bring that up.
Yeah, the, one of the factors is that this, this, this area is about thirty-one acres. The construction will occur in five-acre segments.
Let's see.
So it, there'll be some times when it's closer and other times where it's farther away. That is part of the overall plan and it's necessitated by where they sit in drainage basins.
But I believe we've set up traffic patterns, right? So that traffic is limited for construction, what, nine thirty to two thirty? So that doesn't interfere with rush hour, doesn't interfere with the schools.
Okay.
I believe that we have noise ordinance and restrictions.
There's a whole litany of conditions that have to be followed during construction.
There's also requirements in terms of dust, so that the dust, the dirt is whetted down. All these kinds of things are built into the protocol for the construction.
I appreciate hearing that, and so I didn't know, so that's great.
How has the noise been so far?
There's been very little noise. So, and in fact, even with the construction on the retail side, I have not really noticed that too much.
Yeah, this is, all this, right in this area is all construction right now, you know, going up into here.
I mean, we hear it sometimes, but not, it doesn't, especially in the weekends, I don't hear it. So I'm being honest, it hasn't been, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a problem. But this is closer in, lots of stuff happening.
And he's gonna, they're gonna be on the top of a hill here.
Right. So I worry about it. And the only other thing I just wanted to finish up, this is my last question, is I'd started off with the creep question. And I don't know, you know, how many more of these sessions there will be, and you guys have to make decisions, and there'll be more discussions around, well, we decided we're gonna change it to this, that. I worry about the scope, the creep scope, and therefore having just, you know, the boundary lines get bigger because we have to widen the road or we have to have, you know, whatever, you know, moving garages on one side versus the other side. I don't know what that does in terms of sight lines and things like that. So from a, from a purely selfish point of view, those are important questions that I bring up and ask you for your consideration when decisions are being made. And that's the list of my questions. So thank you.
Well, there's, if you wish, you can leave a self-addressed envelope with the secretary and whenever we have a session involving this applicant, we can make sure you get notice.
Thank you.
This is the first step, the first night of the public hearing. It's likely to go on some, some extended period of time. We've, as you heard from our attorney, that there's still a good deal of work to be done, so it's not going to disappear quickly. But, you know, there's a process and we run through it and, you know, we can't hold up because a neighbor can't be here for a, for a meeting.
Totally understand.
We can't do that. But, you know, we can certainly set up notice so that you're here and can participate.
And I'll take advantage of that, and I appreciate your time. Thanks for letting me speak, and I hope you take into consideration some of the things I brought up.
No, they're very good questions and many of them we have, you know, we've been wrestling with for a while. And the creep thing is, is a very important one as well. That always tends to want to happen.
Sure.
And we're, we're trying to be mindful of that.
And I appreciate your comments about just the look and feel of the community and, you know, protecting the, the trees are important, the, what they provide and the whole thing. So I, that, those were excellent to hear that you're thinking about that.
And part of the creep is, is in the jurisdiction of the town board.
I understand.
Okay.
So thank you.
I do, you're, one of your questions did provoke another question that I have, which has to do with the length of time for construction. There are these five-acre increments, but your construction really is, is driven by market, right? I mean, this is not a spec development. You build, you sell and then build. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the nature of the home, the home types being constructed, there's gonna be some, there'll be more spec development in a town home, detached housing community than there would be in a single-family detached community. You know, we, we do very little spec building in a detached...
That's fine. I just, I wanna get to the, to the length of construction as a consequence of you responding to market as you go rather than building it and sitting on it and waiting for it to backfill.
Yeah, so there's two different...
So how long will it take you, would you project to build this out, ninety-one units?
You know, we hope that we can sell somewhere between, you know, somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-eight homes a year. You know, but we also will, will handle the development in two separate pieces, right? We have a horizontal improvement schedule that's gonna get all your, your roads in and your infrastructure, your site, your, your site basins and...
Develop the site first.
Correct. And then, you know, you're gonna, your...
Then you get the sticks.
Your homes will, will fall behind. So we balance the two.
Okay.
And so when you do twenty, let's say twenty-five or so homes a year, are they spread out overall twelve months, like two a month?
We would love for there to be even flow production, but, you know, where we are geographically, the weather usually does not allow for that, right? And there's months of the year where it's just not conducive to putting foundations in the ground. And also, we're a little bit more sensitive to selling seasons here. You know, you're gonna get, you know, peaks and valleys of, of sales activity. And those, those coupled with, you know, the weather tend to have somewhat of an accordion effect on, on our production schedules. Just one final thing as a result of that discussion around the construction time. There was a question, where there was a question and a discussion around if you move the garage on one side on the eastern, eastern, eastern part of the site here and the entryway on the other side could potentially change the height that's facing the eastern slope. So that's fine, as, as from, but from my point of view, again, does it affect the sightline? Is that, if we weren't gonna see those buildings and then all of a sudden start to see them because they've become higher up by X number of feet, I would at least ask to, at least would know that and see that would be a consideration and a concern because it just changes the look and feel.
True.
Right now, that Cowden Lane is, you almost feel like you're in total country view, so.
Well, one, one of the things you might also wanna do in addition to giving your name and address is that when new revisions come out, there usually are side cuts, you know, so you can get a sense. And there's been some viewshed work, which is in this document, you know, with the existing berm arrangement, and you can get a sense of that too. And if it's changed, you know, you can come in and take a look at it, 'cause the documents will always be in town hall.
And also online.
Ah, yes, even better.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay, now, scheduling. What do we do here? So where are we in terms of staff meetings and then working on some of these details? And of course, we have all the other, other issues. We don't meet again until the first week of October, right? October second or third, second? And then we meet?
What's the, what's the submission date for that October meetings?
Which October meetings? Um, October second is September, this Monday, September tenth.
Yeah, that happening.
Second one?
So the second one will be what, October sixteenth?
Three weeks before the sixteenth.
So that's the end of September.
Last week in September.
Is this September twenty-fourth, I think it was?
It's a Monday, usually, three weeks before.
I don't know if you can...
Twenty-fourth is a Monday.
Very tight, I mean, in addition to preparing, reviewing and also having meetings, so both are two directions.
We also push people off.
Yep.
Because this was the only item for...
Right.
A lot of people.
Those two meetings are pretty full.
Katrina, what are you suggesting?
Sounds like first meeting in November.
Well, we have a very limited schedule due to holidays. November sixth is our next meeting. The town board also has a work session that night. I mean, there's still a need...
With us?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they have their own work session, but we still have a need to have that initial meeting that we were having. I'm even thinking if, you know, depending on the applicant's schedule, you know, if we can fit another meeting in there.
Oh, goodie.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm concerned about timing. I'm concerned about, you know, the fact that there are a lot of holidays that we have had to structure our schedule this fall around. And, you know, there's a lot of work, as Les has indicated, that needs to be done and I...
I think that's the balance, if you're gonna schedule a special meeting.
Yeah.
To allow sufficient time so that the work that we talked about tonight, plus the work we've talked about in a number of sessions with the applicant vis a vis issues for the town board and joint issues for the planning board and town board, so that that special meeting might be twofold. One, the joint meeting with the town board and the planning board reviewing the changes on this application. Also, assuming we'll have the subdivision applications final as well, so we can begin discussing those informally.
Right. I mean, and honestly, what I would like to do is really look at the town board's schedule, 'cause they meet, I think, most likely every Tuesday and compare it with your meetings and try and figure out...
This is yours.
If another two, adding on another Tuesday to discuss this before the planning board and combine the joint discussions with the town board makes sense. But I'd have to coordinate that with the administrator's office. But I, I'm concerned about having enough time to do the work in between to make the meetings useful without bucking into the holiday rush.
It looks like mid-October would be about the soonest we could do that, right?
Yeah.
Soonest to do what?
To have that...
Useful discussion, submission of information.
So when would it be useful for us to convene again on this subject? I know, that's why, so if, are we into November?
Twenty-third of October.
November sixth is, is your next meeting.
October twenty-third be possible if you're looking for a combined meeting?
I, I think having a late October meeting...
October twenty-third is a, is a town board meeting night unless they've changed it.
Is that a Tuesday or what is it?
It is a Tuesday.
Thirty-fifth?
Thirty-fifth is a Tuesday. It's not a town board meeting night.
I think we should try and do one because otherwise it's all not gonna get done.
I, I agree.
I would rather do the twenty-third than...
Bob, you said that's not good for you.
Oh, that's not good for you. I'm sorry, Bob.
How about the twenty-fourth? Are you out for the whole week?
Uh, I'm out the twenty-fourth, back on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth? That's a Thursday?
I can't do the twenty-fifth.
Can't do it? So we're heading towards the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Right, and, and perhaps the town board would be willing to come in on a Tuesday. Do you, I mean, I can work, try and work with this. If you guys wanna choose a date.
The thirtieth?
And I can talk with the town board, with the town administrators, see if there's interest for the town board to come and have a joint discussion with you at the beginning of that meeting.
I, I, I think it's, personally, I think it's important for us to, we've, we've always made efforts to try and, and have special meetings when we can. And I think it's important to do this because it's a big complicated thing. And, you know, quite frankly, we'll have discussions on a particular subject and rarely is it conclusive. It always gets carried over to the next meeting. And so I think it's important to keep the conversation going on a regular basis so that sooner or later, we'll be checking things off. But if we don't start, then we're never gonna finish.
I think it would be, in terms of getting to that point, Tom, there are a lot of issues that we have identified and the applicant is aware of that will kind of fuel that joint meeting. And so they need to put pen to paper and make those submissions so that we have the information that will be the basis of that meeting. That's why I think we're talking about this, you know, timeframe, to get that information submitted and allow sufficient time to review it.
Yeah, but if we meet on the thirtieth, if that's a date, it seems to me that you really need to have that information before you, no later, no, no later than the sixteenth, right?
Before that, if possible.
Yeah, if possible.
I, I, I mean, honestly, I would assume that they're working on that information now.
We are. We've received the ten engineers' comment letter a couple of days ago and are working on that and...
And I'm in the process of reviewing. I'll, I'll have comments out on the environmental analysis in the next week. You know, to the board and copy to the applicant.
So the normal submission date would be October ninth, right? Three weeks before the meeting? How many weeks, seventy days before the meeting?
Yeah, that would be three weeks.
It's the Monday, three weeks before.
So that would be the ninth.
Yeah, but it's a holiday, October eighth, right? It's a school mistake, October ninth.
So the next, the day after.
So you want to try to have it by the tenth, is what you're saying?
Sure. That's a Wednesday.
Tuesday.
The tenth is a Wednesday.
The thirtieth is a...
The thirtieth is a Tuesday.
In the meantime, is there a motion then to direct staff to draw up a memo going to the town board regarding the auditorium? And making that an issue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll get that done. Is there anything else that we need to mention?
So no, we just tentatively continue it to October thirtieth.
Correct.
Um, are, do you wanna state a time?
A continued public hearing?
I think that there, we, I think we're talking about a double bang for the meeting.
Yeah.
One, the joint meeting, and then following it up that same night with a continued public hearing.
Correct. And the question is...
So we'll have a work session with the town board and then a public...
Yeah, which is what we had envisioned actually tonight.
Yes, exactly.
And are you starting at seven PM?
Sort of what, if the town board wants to do six-thirty, we'll do six-thirty, I guess.
Well, you need to choose a time for the public hearing.
Oh.
In your announcement.
I would do seven-thirty, like we did tonight, six-thirty, seven-thirty.
Six, six-thirty to seven-thirty with the town board, public hearing at seven-thirty. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.